Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delrayo City Council. Tonight is Tuesday, January 22nd, 6 o'clock. You will not have to order. Kim, would you please? Councilmember Getzel here. Councilmember Park there. Councilmember Lantel there. Councilmember Gagliotti here. Mayor Kerr quick here. Please join us for the public readings.
Our readings to the United States of America and the free republic which stands one nation under our and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We pray to be continued soon. Almighty God, thank you for free elections and peaceful transition of power. Let us not take those things for granted. Thank you for this good city, this city government. Please bless everybody in this room tonight and make this meeting have good results. And thank you for your presence with us. Amen.
Our first order of meetings is some staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a busy month since our last meeting with the holiday break. I wanted to start by thanking David Kimble and members of the Citizens Action Group for arranging the hosting of nine TLI students over the holidays for dinner. It was very well received by the nine young airmen that had to stay back for whatever reason here and not be with their families over the holidays. Had the reports back, which was fantastic and wonderful. So, thank you all who hosted. Our onboarding process with our new councilmembers is moving ahead very, very well and very busy. The mayor and I met with Mr. Maury to discuss his ideas about making the open park space behind Safeway more accessible to our residents and enjoyable for the public. He has some terrific ideas which we may further develop depending on council guidance during the strategic planning session tomorrow. The mayor, councilmembers Gagliotti and Getzel and I met separately with Monterey Peninsula Partners, who are the property owners of our property of the four-door parcel about the status of Monument RV Park development. We also met with the development team, which includes Monterey Peninsula Partners regarding the larger option parcel on four-door. We met with David Sander and Denise Duffy, the city's economic development and planning staff, and brought them in briefings for all the new councilmembers on those two subjects. Councilmember Gagliotti and I attended an update on South Mountain Road presented by four staff pending the approval of the Habitat Conservation Plan for our roads to be under construction in early 2020 on South Mountain Road. Councilmembers Getzel, Gagliotti and I attended an excellent new councilmembers academy in Sacramento Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of last week. Fantastic offering by the League of California Cities. Mayor Kerr was going to go with us and fell ill, but we shared a lot of presentation by you now. Public Works continued to work throughout the holidays clearing trees and working on our easements and beautifying the city. Staff finalized the plans and specifications for 2018-2019 road reconstruction project, which will include the reconstruction of all the cul-de-sacs in Long Porto and Quendale, Carlton Place and Sausalito. The engineer's estimate is $0.23 million. And we have established the timeline for the project. Look forward to being in construction by May. Staff continues to work with various cannabis businesses to accommodate them in the city. We are the destination of choice for a lot of cannabis businesses and our challenge is space to host them. Public Works identified a sizable homeless encampment on the city's four-door parcel. Our police department is engaged to ensure that hazards to public safety such as stoves and unsupervised dogs are removed. And we are posting the site. We'll be removing a lot of the debris there over the next week. We held a coffee with the city manager last Tuesday evening. Meeting was well-intended and I had a good opportunity to brief the public on the transition process and answer the questions. Staff meant to discuss the timing of our mid-year budget review, which will occur in February, and also to set the timeline for what we hope will be the city's first two-year budget that will be adopted in June. Four staff met with the Native Plant Society on Friday to discuss South Mountain Road project and the agreement between four of the city and the Native Plant Society. Mayor Kerr and councilmember Gagliotti attended along with myself. And then, in the best news, I think, is that pending final decision on January 31st, Tamsi feels very strongly that we're very competitive for a $10.379 million grant of active transportation funds that will fund the design and construction of the first portion of the four-door recreational trail of Greenway from Fremont Street to under Highway 218 into Frog Pond. So, our portion here at Delrayo will be the first one constructed with those great grand ones. And I just wanted to thank Debbie Hale, the executive director of Tamsi, Todd Muck, Rich Deal, the rest of the staff there at Tamsi that worked closely with city staff to get that grant. So, it's a big deal. And Mayor, any questions?
Thank you. Time for council reports. Shall we start with John?
No council reports. All right, no council report yet.
No, I've not attended any meetings, but I have to feedback the manager's comment about the training that we attended last week. California League, the League of California Cities put on an excellent three-day presentation that covered dos and don'ts and ins and outs and what will get you in trouble and what will keep you out of trouble. Very, very good. Highly recommended. And they have a great website even anybody can go to and get information on how is government supposed to work. Thank you.
I attended the seaside sanitation meeting for me and we approved the purchase of a solar video van in the amount of $169,337.50 with the condition that include a one-year warranty and available report on the inspection of the vehicle. We also approved the amendment with Harrison Associates for an amount not to exceed $225,888 for project management and inspection services. When it was suggested having an employee rather than paying the arson of right to Harrison Associates, it was stated that the project is too far underway to consider hiring a new employee. An amendment would be to consulting for a amount not to exceed $171,927 for engineering design support for the construction of a lift station upgrades was also approved. Community Human Services. An excellent presentation was given regarding child sexual exploitation by the staff. C S B C. Robin McCray, who is the CEO of Community Human Services, reported that the HEAP program, H E A P, the local continuum of care, co-alation of homeless service providers, received $12,505,250.30 covering projects in Monterey and San Bernardino counties. This means that there will be $625,626 will be available for unaccompanied homeless youth that will be divided proportionally between the two counties. Since heat plants are intended to be used immediately to meet the needs of the homeless, we will focus on a drop-in center in year one and then expanding to include a shelter in year two. Ambay, the January meeting was canceled. Delrayo Citizens Action Group, there was no meeting scheduled. However, two welcome baskets assembled by Terry Neese of CAE were well-received and appreciated. We've also been informed that there's two more requests for Terry's offices and maybe that's Delrayo. I also wanted to mention the Delrayo Neighborhood Watch. The next get-together will be this coming Sunday, the 27th of January, and it will be at 1:00 and it will be held at 9:36, Portola Drive. And I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
I attended the Seaside Grand Water Basin Water Master Board and pretty much everything I went to this time in January was election of officers. So, Paul Bruno is the chair. He was elected chair. Bob Costa was elected as vice chair. Four-door reuse authority. The Jake Parker was elected chair. And Mayor Joe Gunter of Salinas was the vice chair. And members at large were Ian Oglesby and Cynthia Garfield. So, that's what the new officers. I attended MST. It was our annual strategic meeting. And that's it.
Thanks. So, I've had a busy month getting up to speed. And first and foremost, I'd like to really thank Karen and Kim for welcoming me, joining me kind of the ropes around City Hall and boxes and where to go. I'm glad to be there. And Dino as well for really being very patient with all of my questions as I learned a lot. So, thank you. We, after the holidays, we had two What's On Your Mind open meetings where the point was to gather public input for our strategic planning tomorrow. We'll be setting three-year goals for the city and it was important for your voices to be represented there as well. Also discussed that we're ad hoc committees. So, we're starting with four. They're sign-ups out on the table, parks, arts, history and youth. If you have skills, want to learn something, want to be involved in the city and making something happen, please sign up. You're learning as we go, so I appreciate all of your support with that. And of course, this is in addition to our Neighborhood Watch program. Daniela is with us tonight. The next meeting is Sunday at 1:00 at her home. Watch for details on Nextdoor or connect with Daniela after the meeting. She's in the midst of planning a community emergency response team, PR and CERT training that I believe some of the Citizens Action Group in the past has partaken in. So, if you're interested in learning more about emergency response and how, again, we can help the city in case of a earthquake or a neighbor needing help, please let myself and/or Daniela know or come on Sunday for more information on that. In addition to the many meetings the city manager Pick and I attended, we also met with two different professors at CSU RV. One is a hydrologist and we were talking about the health of our stream and ways in which we may be able to blend forces with Maury for a potential garden center expansion to make sure that our natural resources are taken well care of. The other professor was Dan Fernandez, who manages a sustainable city project for one year that hopefully we can discuss tomorrow at strategic planning. They will come in and they will do, they will get students from many different disciplines and their affiliated faculty to do projects based on our needs. So, that's exciting. In addition, the regular mayor's meeting, Monterey Peninsula Regional Water Authority. I joined councilmen Gagliotti and Sydney Almira for the FORA and the California Native Plant Society meeting at FORA. The Monterey Regional Water District feasibility listening meeting. I don't know how many of you have gone. I believe they're over for this time, but this has to do with the Measure J and feasibility study for whether or not one is appropriate. I also, just this morning, went to a seaside fire department strategic planning session. So, seaside fire is our fire, our fire providers. They are working towards accreditation that only 100 fire departments in the United States has. So, it's a very stringent process. A lot of it is public input and this was part of it. If you don't know, they, oh, actually, it was led by our very own fireman Fugic, who lives on Carlton. So, it's a small world. They install fire alarms, Knox boxes where you can put your key in the house and only they can get access to it in case something happens to your home or your business while you're not there. They will take your blood pressure check the first Friday at Old Meyer Center. So, they truly are all-around fabulous guys in addition to the very serious work they do protecting us. Additionally, in the community, I attended a dear friend's 70th birthday party who lives in Delrayo. I attended the Women's March in Monterey on Saturday and also the Martin Luther King Jr. celebration in the seaside yesterday, which was a great celebration of his contributions. So, on that, I think I'm through. So, next to our business is the consent agenda. Is there?
Madam Chair, I'd like to, or say three, so that it stays quiet.
Anything else? So, can we have approval of the consent of the other items? Or, public comment? On any of the consention items? Public comment plus?
I made a motion that we approved the consent agenda without secret.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Does the leader say aye?
Aye.
Abosed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Would you like to discuss another thing?
Yes. So, Madam Chair, the four-door reuse authority, the four-board is probably one of the most important, immediately important external boards that the city is part of. And the reason is because of its regional scope. It has authority over habitat management, water allotment, land use, infrastructure investment. FORA is one of the last remaining development agencies left in the state. And when we were in San Francisco, our Secretary of State, Senator Whitaker of Sacramento, it was clear to the, that the new governor and the supermajority is reconsidering their wisdom on throwing resource or regional development agencies out. And the reason is because regional agencies can solve regional problems like home, housing, security and water source. So, what happens with our four, what happens with four, our development agency, in the next 18 months will directly impact the future of Delrayo for the good or for the bad. But what's critical is that the city, like all the other jurisdictions, must send the best experience and best qualified persons to that board to ensure that Delrayo receives its share of habitat protection, infrastructure investment and water loss. I'm the best qualified person to represent the city for the following reason. I'm the only council member with direct and applicable land use entitlement experience with actual four-board members. On more than one occasion, I have successfully navigated the SEQA process, the California Environmental Quality Act, as well as the NIVA process, the National Environmental Protection Act. The last project that I entitled was a combined SEQA, NIVA, EIR, EIS document. It gets no more complex than that, in that type of permitting. And that was, that environmental document was commented on by several current four-board members, two of which were supervisors. And that body, Monterey four supervisors, managed the improvement. So, I have shown that I can effectively work with current sitting board members as an applicant, which is a far more contentious relationship and be just as effective, if not more effective, by being, or working with them as a colleague. Two of the four primary directors for it has is to provide for the reuse and redevelopment in many ways, enhance the economy, the quality of life in Monterey Bay community and maintain and protect unique environmental resources in the area. So, being the utility-scale renewable energy developer, in order to be good at that, you have to be able to thread the needle of commerce and conservation. You want to build the largest renewable energy project you can because you want to offset the greatest amount of carbon that you possibly can. Also, the largest project, well, the larger projects are cheaper and they generate more revenue, but they come with a cost. They come with a cost in terms of impact. They have greater impacts to wildlife, they have greater impacts to wildlife, four doors and huge shit. I have shown and proven very successfully how to navigate that. That is a unique qualification that meets and exists in four outdoor areas. And the last thing is, the last reason is that I have spent the last five years, last six years now, as a member of the, as a member of the leadership team of this city, I have been in commission for five years and I chaired for the last three. So, I've shown or have proven history of working with past city councils and now current city councilors now. So, to summarize, I have all of the land use experience that's needed for me on that board. I do not have to learn that part of it, which is, which is great. It was an enormous learning curve. There was no way to learn it other than experiencing it. Two, I have already proven to have, I've already proven that I can work with the directives within FORA, proven using that. And three, I've worked for the city. I have the experience of working for the city. So, given all of that, I'm certain that I will best represent the positive qualities of residents of Delrayo and I will advocate strongly for the city's best years. So, for those reasons, I think that I am the best person to be on the four-board.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Yes. I'm in total agreement with Kevin John as the representative for FORA because of all the reasons he stated. And is your motion approve the alternate?
Yeah, it is. Yes. Actually, we need to, we need to make a motion. You have a motion, a non-discussion. But yeah, I.
Are we going to discuss the alternate now at this point or do we, is this a motion specifically for the primary?
So, there's no motion on the floor as of yet. We're just discussing it. So, do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, can we let everyone else speak or do you want to come back?
I still didn't get an answer as to if this is just the board member or including the alternate?
Yeah, it's both.
It's both.
It's a discussion.
Okay. Then in discussion of the alternate, it is so important and vital to Delrayo, as John has just explained. And I think the alternate is also of great importance if John can't make a meeting. Kristen has been on the, as an alternate on the FORA board for at least 15 years. She has attended many of the meetings and understands what is going on in the arena. And so, I believe Kristen is the most knowledgeable and should be the alternate on the FORA board with John as the primary.
I have gotten to know John only in the last few months, but his technical knowledge and understanding of acronyms, just simple acronyms and entitlements and the ins and outs and how to get, I think he'd be, his experience, we are coming at a critical point for FORA. FORA may be gone in 18 months and it's all going to land in our lap or we'll have a FORA like. Again, more of the requirements and responsibilities that FORA covers will land in our lap. And I think that having John in his vast experience as a developer of reusable energy and working with both state and federal environmental rules and regulations is what city needs on the FORA board. And this market, again, going back to the 18 months, this critical period of FORA, having the continuity and longevity of Mike Sato Clark as an alternate and being applied.
The real thing I have to add is that I know that John has attended, actually, even more meetings than myself in the last two months. So, I believe that he is up to date on what's going on with FORA.
So, my decision to put my name as a representative for the FORA board is based on three points. One, the mayor has been our city's FORA representative for over the last 10 years. The city council considers the FORA's role as so significant that they did appoint them and they agree that the mayor was the representative for the last 10 years. And finally, taking those two into consideration, continuing the mayor as the appointed representative respects our history with FORA, a principle I believe that honors the voters that elected the mayor. So, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Excuse me, public comment? Discussion done?
I would say that, oh, just one point. I absolutely recognize that, you know, that the mayor has been the FORA board, is the FORA board representative for Delrayo for the last 10 years. That's not due to title, that's largely due to influence and experience. And that's, that's been very evident in the stewardship there. I mean, he was, he's done great work for the, for the city on that board. And that's totally become, or that was totally, or he was successful in that endeavor because of his experience and because of his influence. And I think I will be coming to that FORA board with that experience and from that experience be able to build that influence.
I have another comment also. In the packet today, there is the appointment of a vice mayor. There is a recommendation and this, I'm going to quote from it. And it's my understanding that the mayor has approved this to be in the packet. And it says, "The California Government Code requires the appointment of a mayor, pro town, or vice mayor to serve in the absence of the mayor. Councilmember Clark is the most experienced and long-serving council member on the council and is highly qualified to serve in this capacity." And so, I think right there, our mayor has stated that experience is important. And that's why I'm supporting John. And that's why I'm supporting John as the board member and Kristin with her experience as the alternate.
Any other comments before we go to public?
Councilmember Tackrelly, you mentioned something about promoting the best interests of Delray Oaks. I have two questions. Could you tell me what those are?
I can't, we, we don't, that's subject.
Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, no. I'm wondering, I'm thinking about Kristen Clark having the 15 year experience, it occurs to me that maybe that would be a good thing to have for our with our current mayor as the alternate to start running on some of that, so just thought.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmember. Dennis Ollie, Delray Oaks. I, the, the next two years for us, just really critical. I know you all appreciate that. And I don't have any doubt at all that our mayor is capable of stepping up to this job. However, I think that I would recommend that you let John take his seat, have John fill the seat because of his previous experience. And I think it's totally appropriate to you be the alternate. And I personally don't have any issue with that. It's just that there is, if you've been to a fora meeting, these people, there are some very clearly, there's a lot of opinion going around in those meetings, and we need to have factual information, logical thinking going on there. John has this business background and, and his environmental experience, I think it's totally appropriate for the fora board. And I'd, the only thing I'd say is that I, I would disagree. I think that our mayor needs to step up to the plate at some point in time and show me the alternative.
Your three point deal, and I wish to let follow what the, that sounds like, I meant to say, and that was your slight lack of, lack of experience is the reason to not put the mayor at least at the level two, and how she wants to get experience. If she doesn't start attending meetings. There was an election. Why does that have consequences? We want the mayor to be involved. Maybe she's not, maybe she's the alternate, maybe she's the primary, but she needs to be involved. That's the reason she was elected. You need to respect that. And the only way she's going to get experience is to jump in there and start getting, and she is very capable. I've worked with her a lot over the last year. She's very smart, she's very hardworking, and you, she's very likable. So there will be, she'll be a quick learner. But people spoke, and you may not like it, but you didn't listen, you respect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patrice Bucchioli, I live on Sausalo Avenue. My voice is a bit stronger tonight. I think it's very important that our representative on the fora board be an environmentalist. I know that's who Allison Kirk is, it's part of why I voted for her. Our city came out during this election, we made our voices known in a very strong manner by voting for Allison Kirk. I feel strongly that you should be the representative or the alternate, preferably the representative on the board board. Thank you, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Jim Clark, Delray Oaks. I think that we are and cannot take how critical of a stage we are at with fora. And there will be many opportunities down the road for us to involve our mayor and help her come along the lines that had she been involved with the planning commission, had she been involved with the city council, she would have had the opportunity. But I would love to see right now, people involved with fora board representing our city that have the capability to get us what we deserve as a city. Because I'm well aware over the past years, the decisions that have been made and that there is a very small precipice here where we can get what we want to have happen in fora that is necessary for the successful implementation of the city down the road. And without income coming in, we will never see our power lines and stuff underneath the ground. We will never have money to make improvements in the city. And that's set aside for fora board and planned for the city for many, many years. If that doesn't happen, then we're going to be right back, well, it just needs to happen. And so my recommendation is that we go with what councilmember David Yadi proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, we're here as Delray Oaks. I would just like to add my, my input and feedback as well, that I, I do feel for a younger generation of Delray Oaks, that it is incredibly crucial that we respect, we understand our environment, and that the people in power, the people making the decisions are people that have that in the forefront of their minds. While I appreciate experience, while I appreciate connections, networking, all of that is something that I believe a mayor is capable of, perhaps in record time to some. But I would really just like to add that feedback, that it is crucial to keep, keep our younger generation engaged and likewise respect the fact that we're leaving this town in our hands. And I would just like to see the best possible people taking care of that. Thank you. Thanks for your
Hi, everybody. I was just wondering, in my mind, I think it's, my husband was on fora before fora was forged, he was part of it and created, and then created fora. He was a newcomer. He had no experience, but he worked, he wasn't on fora board for 12 years, and started working. Now, every mayor who was sitting there, now, none did no experience with fora, went on the fora board. I wonder what cities when it's now here. Anybody can learn. And I just want to say, every mayor had no experience with fora, but yet they went on the fora board.
Thank you, everyone.
Hi, Susan Raxelkerman, and it's Big Dave Carlton, good to meet you, everyone. I just wanted to say that I stand in solidarity with Allison because we do, I've spent a lot of time talking about where she stands. And I know that I really, really feel confident that if she is a steward of our environment, that she'll do an awesome job. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Public comment is closed. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that I am the principal fora board representative of Kristin Clark Delray Oaks.
I second the motion.
And then, mayor, if I can clarify, does the motion include the approval of all the other described on the table?
Okay, it is yours to second it to change the appointment to the fora board from myself to Congress, or, Congress, pardon. I'm getting you. A big Councilman, Councilman Gagni Yadi, and Mr. Lee Gagni Yadi from the alternate. Alternate? To Vice Mayor Clark. All, those in favor say aye. Opposed? No. The ayes aye. All right, on to the next business, the presentation about the Brown Act from our city attorney.
Good evening, mayor, and members of council members of the public. I've been asked to present on the Brown Act, which is the opening meeting of law of California. I've got a few slides prepared, and I think with any luck, we ought to hear about by tonight, thoroughly. So, so the Brown Act is open meeting law, it's found in the California Government Code. And this is the, sort of the preamble of, of the Brown Act. The people of the state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people and delegated authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. And this is the general rule regarding the Brown Act, and that is that all meetings of the legislative body of a local agency shall be open and public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the legislative body, a local agency, except as otherwise provided within this chapter. And we'll get into some of those exceptions there. So what is covered by the Brown Act? The Brown Act requires all meetings of the legislative body of a local agency to be open and public, and you know, it means open meetings, noticing, agenda, that type of thing, which will be into the city council, of course, as the legislative body for the city. The Brown Act also covers commissions, for example, the planning commissions, and committees of, of the city are also covered. So those that are created by the city composed by the council, whether it be by appointments, are covered by the Brown Act, that means the meetings have to be open and agendaized. Standing committees are also covered by the Brown Act if they have continuing subject matter jurisdiction or may be fixed by charter ordinance resolution. Many cities have a finance committee, they have a force committee, and if they have a fixed time in which they need, or they have continuing subject matter jurisdiction, then those are open meetings that are subject to the Brown Act, which require public attendance, public comment, and agendas. Some committees comprise the only members of a body with a defined task and a limited duration are not covered by the Brown Act. Those are usually called ad hoc hiring, ad hoc meetings, for example, a hiring committee that is a very narrow defined task that, that doesn't continue on its limited period of time. Who is covered by the Brown Act? This is obviously the members of the body, but relative to the election we just went through is even individuals who are elected that haven't been installed in their office yet are also covered by the Brown Act. The Brown Act is applicable to meetings where a majority of members are present at the same time location, including teleconferencing to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. That is a, a meeting of the Brown Act. One of the most, one of the more frequent questions I get about the Brown Act has to do with serial meetings. So here we have a forum oral here where I've noticed meeting, but what happens when council members see each other down the Safeway and they start talking about what's going on with the city business? And so there's, there's two types of, of meetings that you have to watch out for, and those are called daisy chains, or it's sometimes called the telephone game, where one council member will call the other, the other will call, say, to them, they will leave, A just told me, and on down the line. The other is a hub and spoke meeting, and that is maybe a member of the council calling the other council members, building a consensus to support or oppose something, or the other one may be a staff member acting as, as the hub. And one of the important things to remember is, and I've heard said, is, well, we didn't, we didn't really come up with anything, so it wasn't, you know, that, that shouldn't be a problem. Well, indeed, there's no collective concurrence required, and all, all it's covered is to discuss, deliberate, or take action. So it's really talking about any city business outside of a publicly noticed meeting is prohibited. Frequently, when I see a reply all, I get a little nervous, you know, if an agenda comes out and, you know, and I see a reply all, it's just, you've got to be, be aware of that, because that's a real easy way to get in trouble. Say, this looks great, could hardly link to this, that's exciting, I think it's a great idea, reply all. You know, that's, that's a violation. And the other one that we see more and more of is, is social media, and there's a case law, a news post that says, you know, even liking a story or an idea by someone else is an affirmative act, and, and constitutes discussion on, on the night events within the jurisdiction of, of the city. So related to that is, we have circumstances that are not considered a meeting under the Brown Act. And, and back to the, to the serial meeting we just discussed, again, a frequent topic of inquiry, at least to my office, is, am I, you know, can I, can I talk with my constituents? Can I talk with staff? Can I talk with other folks? And indeed, they can, and at least with constituents, there's probably an obligation to do that. So that is not a serial meeting, because there's not other members of the legislative body. The other one is the staff briefings. And the example I always give is, the city council gives the packet, and invariably there's questions of the city manager, the finance manager, or whoever it might be. So explaining that, the city manager, having the individual conversations is completely acceptable, as long as the city manager, whoever it is, doesn't become the hub, saying, well, you know, I talked to A, they think this, like, they have the same question, it's not, we can't have that. So as long as that keeps, those conversations are discreet, you're okay. Another area where you frequent questions are, can we all go to the city seaside council meeting? Can we all go to the planning commission meeting? Because we want to hear what goes on. We're all going to be at the reception for the X, Y, Z. Can we go to that? And the answer is yes, you can't, there's exceptions there, of course, with the proviso that a city business is not discussed unless the council members, if they attend. If it's, for example, the planning commission, as long as, you know, they're, you're there and you're observing. And then a specific exemption, exception is for adjourned hearings where you're called in to talk with the grand jury. The Brown Act discusses several types of meetings. Regular meetings are the ones that are, that take place pursuant usually to the, to the city code. In Delray Oaks, it's 2.04.010, and that's establishing the fourth Tuesday of each month at 6:00 PM. So that's what you call a regular meeting. Special meetings, can you call at any time to discuss discreet items of business? And I know you're, one of your likely notice provisions, and I'll get to that in just a second. And then emergency meetings, where you're clearly trying to gather people up because of some, usually, you know, the example of labor strikes and earthquakes, and really an emergency meeting, not, you know, trivial matters, it really has to be a bona fide emergency to discuss. Teleconferencing, teleconferencing is allowed, provided a majority of the members are in the jurisdiction. The agenda must identify each location where the person's going to be. So sometimes I have a question, well, we're not sure where we're going to be, can we just put TVD? The answer is no. If you're going to be traveling and you don't know whether you'll be in Italy or Switzerland at that particular time, we can't have you participate via teleconference. The agenda has to be posted at each teleconference. So there's a city councilman from a neighboring jurisdiction that was at his sister's wedding in Italy, and he in lobby posted his little agenda. In lobby events. The location has to be accessible to the public. The public must be able to speak in this location. So if some Italians walked by and wanted to participate, they could. And again, the majority of the members must be in the jurisdiction. So here's a little hypothetical, this is a call I, I had, and it usually comes in two varieties. A council member calls in and says, I'll be on a cruise during the council meeting to a really important issue. Can I call into the meeting if I post the agenda onboard and allow anyone on the ship to comment? And the answer is you can't, because it's not open to the public. So usually that comes also in, I'm going to drive to LA during the meeting, can I just call into the meeting and participate? And unfortunately, because those aren't open to public, it's not, for instance. So it's the distinction between, you know, the Venice hotel room, which is pretty welcoming to folks in, in a cruiser or on a ship. Agendas pretty much take care of the noticing requirements under the Brown Act. Regular meetings are 72 hours' notice, special meetings are 24 hour notice. Emergency meetings are generally not, if the media's requested notice for regular meetings or special meetings, you've got to give them a call and wait at least an hour to discuss. The agendas have to be posted in publicly accessible locations, 24/7, that's usually City Hall or a few other spots throughout the city. If the city has a website, as Delray Oaks does, then it also has the obligation to post the agenda on there. to post the agenda on there.